Let's call a meeting to order and ask everybody to stand for the flag. Please. Bless Mr. Dean if you will to lead us into place.
My pleasure. This is the White of the United States of America. Intended for all of our citizens. By one nation, united in Christ. In the future.
Please remain standing please for a moment. Thank you. You may be seated.
Amen.
First on the agenda, we need to approve the agenda. Do we have a motion to do so?
I'm moving to approve the agenda.
Motion been made or seconded?
I second it.
Oh, any discussion on this agenda? On paper say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Next is recognition. We have any recognition? If not, we'll move to public comment. We've got three topics tonight on public comment. And we'll try to break them down and we do want everybody to be able to... Can you turn this up just a little bit? We... Test. There you go. We do want everybody to be able to speak. We want to hear from everyone. So, we'll go with the COVID funding. We ran an ad in the paper asking if anybody wanted to put the public comment in on what those funds should be used for. If you need... Anybody who wants to speak to that, now's your chance. Okay. If not, we've got another topic. I think several people's here to speak on. Busing and Jonesville Middle School being a feeder school for both high schools. I ask that if you come and speak, if you have five minutes, please be respectful. Everybody up here will be respectful. Please sign in. We've got to keep signing signatures for people who speak in here have five minutes for the meetings. So, anybody here over the Jonesville-Busing topic, the floor is open to you. Yes, ma'am. Roger, mind us. Roger, walk. Okay. And for the rest of you in public comment, right after that, in public comment. I'm sure there's things that we need to say or will say, and please hang around for that. But the floor is now open. State your name, please.
Hey, my name is Kelly Sharrett. Earlier this week, I sent an email to Mr. Dean and all five board members about my concern over this bus situation. Mr. Kewell was the only one to respond. I would like to read my email to the public right now. I am writing this letter today not as a teacher, but as a very concerned parent. I along with many others am very disappointed in the board's 3 to 2 vote to discontinue the bus route from Jonesville Middle School to Thomas Walker High School. This bus route was added in 2013 when my oldest son was given to eighth grade. We were told the reason being was to encourage more students from the Jonesville area to attend Thomas Walker so that Lee High's enrollment could stay within the requirements for the VHSL 2A athletic levels. Before my son even began kindergarten, we had planned for him to attend Thomas Walker High School as soon as he was old enough. My younger brother had attended Thomas Walker and we fell in love with the small community school environment. As working parents, when this bus route was added, it provided great relief as we no longer had to worry about how we would get him to and from school each day. At the time, I was working at Pennington Middle School and could drop him off at Jonesville in the mornings where he would board a bus to Thomas Walker. In the afternoons, when he did not have after-school activities, he would ride the bus from Thomas Walker to Jonesville and then transfer onto the bus that would bring him to our home in West Jonesville. My son and our family loved the five years that he was enrolled at Thomas Walker and now our participation and love for the school still continue. My younger son will be in the seventh grade at Jonesville Middle School this fall. He is supposed to be entering the eighth grade at Thomas Walker, but because of reasons irrelevant to this message, we held him back in first grade, thus putting him behind... A year behind other kids his age. While this bus decision does not affect my family this year, it will for the next five years. The statement at last month's board meeting was that this decision would affect approximately forty students. While this is not a great number in comparison to the total enrollment of Lee County public schools, it is very significant to get to the enrollment at Thomas Walker. Forty students is more than one complete bus load. Can you tell me exactly how much money would be saved by eliminating one bus route? Saying it is for financial reasons does not even begin to make sense when you look at the amount of money that is wasted within our school system each year. Lee County and the Jonesville-Flatbuts area is so geographically spread out that for many students in the western part of our town, it is actually closer for them to attend Thomas Walker instead of Lee High. Although it will never be admitted, what it will sound to is jealousy over athletics. Over the last few years, athletics, particularly the girls' program at Thomas Walker has flourished, while overall athletics at the other school has declined. So, the athletes are choosing to either leave or bypass Lee High School altogether to participate in more successful programs within and outside of Lee County that can help them continue on to the next level should they pursue it. If you were to poll the families of students who ride the bus from JMS to Thomas Walker, you would see that only around one-fourth or less of them are athletes. There are many students in the Jonesville-Flatbuts area who are not athletes who choose to attend Thomas Walker for the smaller class sizes, community-family-like atmosphere, or even put themselves in situations with less drama or to get away from bullies. As I mentioned earlier, my younger son will only be in the seventh grade. He is not an athlete. He has no interest in athletics. However, he is a special needs student and will still attend Thomas Walker for his high school career. He has severe social anxiety and school is a majorly stressful situation for him. He along with many other students in our county need the smaller structured learning environment that Thomas Walker can provide. As members of the Board of Education, you are sworn to do what is best for the students of Lee County. By understanding not providing transportation from locations east of Jonesville Middle School, it has never been that way. However, by eliminating this bus route, you think you are preventing a few athletic students from choosing to attend Thomas Walker, but you are also punishing far more non-athlete students and working parents by not assisting them in getting the best education they deserve. I hope the board will reverse their decision to eliminate this bus route and reinstated for many years to come. I also hope the board will recognize Jonesville Middle School as a feeder school for both Lee High School and Thomas Walker High School, giving students the option to attend the Lee County High School of their family's choosing. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So, I want to make mention too, public comment is just that, public comment. It's not question and answer. We have an agenda here that's got action items on it and, you know, action items determined on the middle school, status feeder school. What she's talking about, we'll address that and we'll speak on that. We're not going to go back and forth with... Also with the transgender policy, it's action item. Jay, looks like review of policies. Apple port to Virginia code 221, is it? Okay. So, hang around these things. We'll get talked about, but public comment is not a question and answer. We've come over, I just wanted to make that clear. And once again, the floor is open to anybody on the Jonesville-Busing round. Okay, moving around along, I'm sure there's several here to speak on the transgender issue. So, we'll open the floor for that at this time. Go ahead.
Thank you, members of the board. My name is David Feedy and I am here to speak on behalf of about fifty people. We had a meeting Tuesday evening, so I do represent about fifty people. We oppose adopting any policy that supports or represents the current transgender policy handed down by the Virginia Department of Education. This policy is not in the best interest of all of our students in Lee County. The policy is specific in its protection of the rights of transgender students, but does not include language and ensure the morals and values of students that aren't in agreement with the transgender movement are protected as well. These policies are politically considered inclusive, but in reality exclude persons that adhere to traditional conservative views. How often is a student allowed to change their self-proclaimed gender? Does this policy apply to adults of the school equipment? Must they adhere to the lifestyle this difficult perceived and as the identified gender? If clothing and fashion is not allowed to be used to outwardly determine sex, what will separate the two sexes in the eyes of the public or even the school staff? Are teachers supposed to ignore when they see a girl go into a boy's bathroom? Are they supposed to turn a blind eye to a boy going into the girl's bathroom? Or if either wants to sleep in the same hotel room on a school-sponsored trip? This policy is sold as protection, but it is most certainly the opposite. Although the transgender person may perceive themselves as the opposite sex, they can be seen as their biological sex to most others. What about students that are afraid or just too timid to encounter the opposite sex in the restroom? Will traditional-thinking students be expected to avoid restrooms, locker rooms, and these private areas that are basically considered general neutral? Will they have to sit out of overnight trips to avoid feeling uncomfortable in hotel rooms? We are not supporting the bullying and harassment of any students. However, protecting one child from discrimination may inadvertently subject others to treatment that impedes their rights. This policy also institutes gender education that we do not want talk to our children. They are completely in direct opposition to our religious beliefs and scientific fact that there are only two genders. Will we be able to opt out our children if this passes? We cannot adopt policies that promote confusion in our children. Although older children may be confident in their identity and faith, what about our young children? Those that are four, five, six-year-old, they are very impressionable at this age. I strongly urge you as elected school board members to search out ways to either completely oppose adopting this policy in its entirety, or at the very least draft a policy to protect the rights of all of our children. As a believer in Jesus Christ, I must also say that we are confronted with moral dilemmas when men and women interject opinions and supposed vex practices into what God has already established as moral. Man's opinion is tainted with selfish motives and pride. Therefore, when there is a question of what is moral, we must always refer back to the Word of Almighty God as its pure, unadulterated truth and light. We live in a country that the Constitution declares a government that is by the people and for the people. Our government is not meant to hand down policy, but rather the people hand up the policies that we support. I pray that you will seek the Lord's will and allow Him to guide you in your decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. So, the floor is still open. Anybody else wanting to speak, just come right up.
There's really no need to follow that, but he is not here. My name is Andrea Lowe and I'm a lifelong resident of Lee County, former student. I'm a local pastor, teacher, parent, and neighbor. I'm here this evening to make a public stand against any policy that allows for co-ed restrooms, locker rooms, or the like. As a Christian, the Bible is my moral code of conduct and James 4:17 tells us that when anyone knowing the right thing to do fails to do so, that we're guilty of that sin. So, I stand therefore here tonight as a leader and a role model to do what is right. It is my social responsibility to expose and to break the systematic patterns and cycles of generational sexual perversion. The word says that all things done in the dark will come to the light. And here we are with a spotlight in a public forum on perversion. What a great opportunity we have to place our own feet firmly on the solid rock and say enough is enough. I have a real good book full of sound policies and procedures to guide you. But I don't believe that... I really don't believe that I'm looking at people today that are even wondering if this is right or wrong. I do wonder perhaps that there may be fear for legal ramifications from Richmond. While fear is human, it's not from the Lord Jesus.
Amen.
And I would remind you of the possible... Also, the possible legal ramifications that pale in comparison to what you may face from Richmond, to the can of responsibilities that you wield, that will fall directly into your lap. As the direct result of rape, molestation, pedophilia, and assault accusations that will start flushing out of our bathrooms. And that is as a direct result of these insane policies. I sincerely encourage you to stand up for what's right, to stand up for our children, mine and yours. And we will stand with you. That's a promise. In closing, I'd just like to say that let's take a flying leap off this fear train, this politically motivated fear train, and stand up with the boldness that the good Lord gave us. At no time should we ever tolerate a grown man unsipping his pants in front of a little girl. At no time should we ever make it easier for a woman to solicit or expose our sons. The only thing that needs exposed here is the evil behind this garbage. It's time that we effectively lead our neighbors out of the darkness and not shoot out the light. Not only am I calling for a vote against this evil policy, but I'm calling for an immediate zero tolerance policy to be put into place today. And I thank you for your time and I am sure praying that the good Lord will help you make your decision. And we've been discussing this with her. At sixteen, she feels that school is her private area. They have certain areas they can go to that they're safe and they ain't got to worry about what the boys are doing over there because they have their own area. But I tell her all the time, we have to understand people are different. That's what makes us right. But if adults cannot handle the transgenders being mixed in jails, that we're seeing women being assaulted already where they're implementing this in our jail system, how can we ask our children to accept this? They're not accepting it in jail, that's grown men and women. I can't see where we can ask our five-year-old, let alone our sixteen-year-old, to stand back and let someone show them what we can't even allow to show them at home. That's not right. And I don't think teachers or any adult in that school system should have the right to tell my daughter that she has to stand there while a guy pisses next to her. I'm sorry. So, I pray that each and every one of you really looks at this, because I know for a fact, if that happens at my daughter's school and she happens to be the one in the bathroom, I will be getting a call from the principal or the cop because they took my daughter out because she's not going to stand there and watch someone else do this. So, I pray, I just pray that you will please take into consideration not only the girls and boys, but these transgender people who are entering our school system are going to be harassed, be in everything. And why subject them to it if we could just not have this policy at all so that they're not still allowed and blood running down our halls? That's what I want, is everyone to be safe. Thank you.
So, the floor is still open. Anybody else? Don't want to leave nobody out.
I am a graduate of Lee High from 2003. I was injured in 1997 when I fell out of a tree. And at that time, I witnessed the mobilization of this community and this school system around my injury. I am a white male cisgendered, which means straight for those that do not know. And to witness what this community is doing, pulling itself apart because of kids, you're talking about kids whenever you're talking about limiting their ability to go to the bathroom. Talking about kids going to the bathroom. And you all are up here railing against them as though they are some perverted adults going in there with them. That's not how it works. People... Perverts don't dress up in a dress and put on lipstick to go into the bathroom. They're in the classroom with you, just like Rob Widener was. You know, this... They're your neighbors.
Please don't... Don't mention people in public comment.
Okay, I will not mention any more names. But this idea that you need to be afraid of kids going to the bathroom based on the gender that they know in their hearts and in their minds that they are is shameful. You all are hiding behind your religious beliefs in order to cater to your own fears and ignorance. And I don't mean ignorance in an insulting way, I mean ignorance in a non-understanding way. I'm ignorant at some things, everybody's ignorant at things. I implore the school board to pass this model, the Model LGBTQ policy without delay because the lives of these children are at risk. Kids that are confused by their bodies and confused by the fact that their mind and their hearts don't match the body that they were born with, they... That confusion is compounded by their community and by their school system and by the parents telling them that they're wrong and telling them that their lives and what they feel and know themselves to be is wrong. And if this policy does not pass, you are telling them, those students, the same thing, driving them closer and closer to suicide, driving them closer and closer to depression and all of the bad things and reinforcing the bad feelings that they are taught every day in their communities. So, please ignore the hate and bigotry that you're hearing and do what is right for these kids and this school system. Thank you.
Anybody else?
My name is Louis. We have a passion right here at this Church of God. Lots need to say to that from a few people. Not much that I can add to it. I just hear these words that because, you know, we just happen to disagree with something that we hate, has nothing at all to do with hate, it has something to do with truth. When truth falls in the streets, people hurt. And the greatest is not for the Education Board in Lee County, but for us to oppose what's right. Amen. And when I think of the persons or the people that are going to be suffering the most, of course, we all naturally think of our children. And for us to say, or anyone to say that, that it doesn't affect our children in a negative way, I don't think we're even reasonable about it. The truth is, our young ladies are going to be the ones that suffer more than anybody. If a person doesn't think that young men, to be blatant about it, wouldn't act like maybe we're something that they're not just to go into a girl's bathroom and just... The reason why I know that is since we were talking about it one time, I was a young man. And it seems to me like women have been fighting for women's rights for a long period of time and to take those rights away at a very young age would certainly be a travesty for our young men. It would be the same way, I mean, to add to confusion, to justify what we all in this place know is wrong. I'm sure that we all have people in our families that believe opposite of what we believe, but just because it gets home doesn't mean that we have to change our mind about it or to justify something that we absolutely know to be wrong. And contrary to the real God. I'm not here saying it's a scripture, but I'm here saying as a concerned citizen of Lee County, Virginia. And we don't have to follow suit with the rest of the nation.
Amen.
But just since we're talking about scripture and I don't know how many people here profess to be Christian, I guess Christian now has become a vulgar and a bowed word. And anyone that has Christian attached to their name automatically haters. But to love someone is to be truthful with someone. So, we've got to be much more truthful. So, since we're talking about scripture, the Bible says that if we regard iniquity in our heart... Now, what does that mean? It means if we put our stamp of approval on iniquity, on sinfulness, on what's wrong, not in our eyes, but in God's eyes. That means that God doesn't even hear our prayers. In Joshua chapter 21, the Bible says that the people, because there was no king, no rule, no one to guide them, didn't what was right in their own eyes. And so, we find ourselves in a similar situation in America and hopefully not in Lee County, doing what's right in our own eyes and at the same time comes against everything that we know is right. And everything that we know is right for our children. Our children will suffer for generations if Lee County School Board supports this. Amen. And so, I would say, as the young lady said a few moments ago, that we will stand behind our school board if our school board stands behind what's right. But please don't misunderstand me. Do not take this as a threat because it's certainly not a threat. But we will also stand against our school board if our school board stands against what's wrong. And what do I mean by that? I mean, we have voted by us from Virginia, Virginia. And if I'm not mistaken, we voted each and every one of you in. And again, I'm not saying this as a threat. I'm not trying to be mean or angry. I'm just simply saying we placed each and every one of you on the school board because we thought you would do what's right for our children. And so, to do what's right for our children is to oppose this transgender bathroom used by male and female the same. Again, consider also the events that will take place throughout the year. Consider the sporting events. Consider people who may or may not be transgender that may be going into the bathroom with your children, with your grandchildren. You think about that and what if something happens to your children? How would you feel about it? How would you feel if your grandchildren? Thank you.
My name is Jamie Good. I'm not a public speaker, so... Little miss. I'm here to scare my three-year-old daughter. She's starting school this year. I'm scared of her. I'm here to scare my three-year-old daughter. She's starting school this year. I'm scared of her.
Bless your Lord.
I'm not scared. I'm not scared. I'm not starting school. Every child should be excited. I'm not scared. My child has a degree. She understands the law. She's taken everything. She's raised in church since day one. God let her be here. She was born with a little child. And God blessed him with another one. I don't know what from growing up to think it's okay. But we all obviously know it's against the Bible and it's called Word. It's obvious. It's in the Bible. If you read it, you know. I'm not saying I know everything. I'm a bluey's tip. But I don't want my daughter to walk into a bathroom and see another child or even a man. And she will ask questions and she'll come home and be taught something different and be so confused. And what if one day she walks in that bathroom in the wrong town? And I don't want her to grow up to feel what has happened to me. I shouldn't have to worry about that. Though a child should, male or female should. Because it could happen, even to a three. We all know it can. And I'm here to speak my word, my peace about that. And we all know it's wrong. Nothing should be should. There's nothing should else be said above that. I'm not coming up here angry. I'm not coming up here anyway. I'm coming up here with peace and saying not parts, because anyone should. Because my opinion makes.
Hi, my name is Robert Oliver and I do not have a child at Lehigh any longer because I'm older than they are too. I wanted to come here today to thank all of you for reading the law and the policy because you're aware that what the law is asking for is reasonable accommodations for all children. It's not asking for overnight sleepovers with, we were all teenagers, we know what all that's about. It's not asking for that, it's asking for reasonable accommodations. Which means that we treat all of our children fairly and equitably, no matter who they perceive themselves to be. That we have no right to judge who they think they are. We just need to give them the safety to use a restroom that is a reasonable accommodation. Specifically in the policy, it says it can be a single person restroom. So that's really kind of a no-brainer to me. And I apologize on behalf of some of our community that y'all are not maybe, this is not going to be easy for y'all and I feel for you, that's basically where I'm going. But a reasonable accommodation just means that we treat everybody equally and it doesn't mean that we all have to be piled into the restroom together. Because we were all kids and we know that's a bad look. But I appreciate what y'all are doing and that you're going to do the right thing and follow the law that was passed a little over a year ago and come up with a policy that works for everybody. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is T.J. Miles. I have a son that goes to Johnson Middle School. And this is just wrong. It's wrong. The boys and girls should not share a bathroom. It's not right. And I know sometimes there's two or three kids in the bathroom, three or four. What are we going to do one day where there's two or three boys in the bathroom and then there's one girl comes in there? What's going to happen? It shouldn't be blamed on parents because parents are not making the decision. Well, some of them are not. It's not right. And my child knows, God made man and woman. He made you a boy, you're a boy. He made you a girl, you're a girl. And this is not right. I mean, y'all want my child in a school like this. And I hope y'all brush this and not before this. It's wrong.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Clifford Griffin. I'm a veteran of the army. I've served with people of all genders, of women and men. Black, white, yellow, whatever you got, whatever you want to determine the different people. The one thing that is hard for people to understand is there is an agenda that is being put out.
Amen.
They want to redefine the dictionary. Every word that we say, I may say equity or equality. There is a difference. And every time we see somebody come up there, we just want equal rights. But for the kids that believe in the Bible, the kids that were raised to believe that the Bible is solid, it is the truth, it is a truth, it is the truth.
Amen.
All right? There is, if people think truth is relative, it is not.
Amen.
If you believe truth is relative, I can believe anything. I am a tree and you better call me a tree, you better provide me a place in the woods that I can stand and wave my leaves at. But I'm not making fun of nobody. Where do we draw the line? The first line we need to draw is the definition of the words that you are putting out. What does equality mean? All right? I agree that people should not be hurt or abused or, no matter what they are, no matter what they believe. I agree. Every Christian in here believes that people should not be hurt and killed. That's one of the, that's one of the ten commandments, thou shalt not kill. But when we start defining these words, what tends to happen in these situations is, is we start narrowing out one group of people from the rest of them and saying they are special. Everybody in y'all's eyes is special, not just 1% of the people. Or 3% or 4%, whatever it might be. Everybody is special and we need to remember, when we make laws or when we agree to them or when we put policies into the process, what is it going to, how is it going to affect everyone? And I'm not mad at anybody. I believe that transgender people should not be hurt, should not be embarrassed or whatever. But I do believe in the Bible and I believe certain things are wrong. And when we do this, we're actually hurting the kids that claim to be Christian. Because it's for sure that transgender and the gay agenda and all of this, they get to speak their piece. But if a child stands up in the classroom and says, "I can't participate because I do not believe that way", they're going to get ostracized. So, we need to make sure there's a reason. We need to make sure there's a reason about it. And when I was little, okay, y'all may think I'm crazy. It's been years since I've been in school and most of y'all too. But when I was little, I did not like to be in public with other people in the bathroom with me. I don't care, men, women, children, whatever. I liked to be by myself. That was my private kind. So, at the least, we should build stalls from the top down that can be locked from inside, that no one can see inside and allow each child to have their privacy. I don't think, is my five minutes over?
No.
I know, you got 15 seconds.
Well, anyway, I stand opposed to this policies, okay? But we need to rethink how we do these things and be Christians and show the light to the world and show people that we do love, but we do stand for the truth. Not relative, it's not relative. The Bible is plain. Now, if you don't believe in the Bible, I'm sorry, it don't matter whether you believe or not. One of these days, both of us will find out whether it's true or not. So, I stand opposed and I urge you all to oppose anything that has to do with it. Thank you.
Sorry the mic went out. I think it's cordless mic maybe went out. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Joe Kowton and I am a school bus driver. We see stuff happening on school buses every day. Okay, we separate the kids, we report it. They get slapped on the wrist, they're back on the bus in three days. Okay, we can't see inside the bathrooms. So how can you do anything to the kids? They say, "Well, it's her word against mine" or "His word against hers". Yes, I am a Christian, but there's other issues to talk about. Because the simple fact is on the school buses, kids do stuff, they touch each other. You separate them, like I said. How can you maintain that in the bathroom? Unless you're going to watch it 24/7. Can you do that? I have a 16-year-old at Lehigh and I have a 12-year-old daughter at Pincantle Middle. Somebody does something to one of my kids, I'm going to be furious. Now, I like working for the school system. I do my job the best I can. I talk to the kids, any kind of trouble they have, I try to work with them. I even report what I have to report. I keep my notes, everything. But like I said, I can't do that when they're in the bathroom. Now, you all know how it is on school buses. You're inside four walls with the door shut. Just imagine how bad it's going to be.
Hi, my name is Summer Hart. And I have two daughters. They're pretty young. My daughter is nine and the other one is in Head Start, or she would be in Head Start. But because of this policy, I will not send my child to public schools. Because I think for every person here, the concern is a safety issue. We're all afraid to send our kids to school. We have people crying. No parent should have to worry about sending their kid to school and something happening to them. So, it's like everybody here said, it's not right. Nobody wants any kid bullied. Honestly, I don't think any parent here can say that they even teach their kid to bully somebody else. I don't teach my kid that. And if you ask your kids, I don't know about anybody else, but I've asked my kid how she would feel about this. She doesn't want to be in the bathroom with a boy. She didn't even know what transgender was until I had to explain it to her. My job as a parent is to keep her safe, to keep her little as long as I can. I don't want her taught gender studies. That's a no. I want to know exactly what my kids taught. I want to know what you're telling my kid. If I get the option to opt my child out of sex ed every year, which I do because it's my right to teach her, I don't want anybody else teaching her and answering questions. Because that's my job. So, if I have the right to opt her out of sex ed, why don't I have that right for gender study? Because as far as I can tell by reading material, I don't have that right. And like somebody else said, kids are really impressionable. I don't know what you're going to be teaching my kid. My child's going to be in Head Start. That's really confusing for her. Are you going to tell her, "Oh, it's okay if you feel like being a little boy"? And she decides that she wants to be and I'm like, "No!". What happens then? You literally have teachers and educators, which I tell her to trust, and then there's me. It's confusing for the kids. It's not right. So, that's my issue. Sports are completely different issue. I think everybody is on the same page here. So, most parents are going to end up putting their kids in homeschool or private school. I have meetings all week next week for private school. So, this is really going to be a funding issue, I think, for Lee County Public Schools. Because you're going to see a lot of parents that pull their kids out of school just because we want our kids to be safe. That's all we want.
My name's Kayla Washburn. I have a daughter in school. I came to you at the last meeting over 16, 19 and all that. One thing you might want to pay attention to is they're sending this to you to make the decision on. If you make the decision and a child gets hurt in a bathroom, a young girl gets raped, boys will be boys, they think they're going to get away with something. I grew, I raised three, but there were two boys. I know exactly how they think. You are the ones that are going to be responsible for this. If you have to, put in a bathroom, if that's what needs to happen. But if you pass this and allow it to happen, Mr. Northroom's going to get away with it. He's going to sit back and he's going to laugh at you and we're all going to be mad at you. So you really need to think about the decision you make. He is pushing this on you to cause conflict. We've got to get that man out of there and anybody like him. That's all I got to say.
Hey, how you doing? My name's Kyle Chance. I'm a recent graduate of Lehigh, 2021. And I just thank God this wasn't in the school system when I was in school. And I got cousins, I got family that's coming into this school system. They're young, 12, 13, coming in the eighth grade. And with this policy, what I read is that a man can walk into a girl's restroom and nobody says anything about it. Well, you come into high school and, you know, everybody's like, "Oh, changes from middle school to high school", you know, it's crazy. With this policy, it don't make it any better, it just makes it a jungle. And, you know, I heard someone say about like the stalls earlier, how they should build stalls. Well, as a former student, I can tell you, the stalls ain't even built as is. They don't even have doors on them. So that's just another thing, about former point. And I just want to ask a question. How many people are parents that have daughters in this school system? Can I hear your voice?
Hear.
Okay. So, look at it this way. How would you feel if your daughter, granddaughter walks in the bathroom one day and a boy walks in the bathroom, you know, how would you feel about it? You know, because this is affecting parents, it's affecting the students if something were to happen. And, sorry, I'm not a public speaker. I just, I ain't got nothing prepared or nothing. And I'm not a perfect Christian, but I do believe in the good Lord and I believe in His words and I believe in what is right. And I don't believe this is right. I believe that men who stop being the same guys... I believe that men who stop being a sad biker, you know... I mean, I'm a teenager, you know, I've, I see stuff at Lee High all the time. So I can only imagine what's gonna happen if this bill was passed. And I hear stuff... And, um... Sorry, I just lost my train of thought. I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought, I'm sorry. But, um, I can't speak for myself, I can speak for pretty much almost everybody here, that if this bill is passed, it's not gonna be, it's gonna be bad. Something, you know, it's gonna be an outrage. And people are talking about, I mean, I'm not discriminating against the LGBT community, you know, but I just don't believe in these policies that are like, the, I mean, I'm... But I don't believe that we should bow down to the minority and be held against what the majority... I'm sorry, I just sound pretty stupid right now, so... And in today's society, being a Christian or a Republican is just, you know, that's, people think you're just evil. And people are afraid to speak up because they already are white Republican or anything like that. Because in today's society, you know, Democrats are running the show. This is an opportunity to stand up for what we believe in and just voice our opinions, and... That's all I got to say. I lost everything, so...
Anybody else?
My name is Glenda Finisterre, and I do not hide behind my religion. I am a true born-again Christian, and I am not ashamed to say that. I have had children in Lee County School System for over 40 years. I still, I will be 63 next month, and I still have four children in the school system. Grandchildren in the school system, and soon to have a great-granddaughter in the school system. Any teacher here can tell you that I have stood behind them for 40 years. If my children was in trouble at school, their punishment carried out at home. They didn't get away with it. But I am here to tell you, I had a daughter that was raped in this school by a football player, and was never punished. And today, she is 42 and still has problems.
Amen.
I have two children at home that I was blessed for God to allow me to adopt and become their parent. They were both at two and four-years-old sexually abused by a woman called Mother and Mother's boyfriend. After one of them started at the school, the little girl started at the school, she was took and put in the aisle on the school bus and held down and kissed by a boy. I will not allow her to go to a bathroom
And invite her.
And be tormented again. She has nightmares already because she's gonna have to come here and have to go to a bathroom with someone else. I don't have an issue with transgenders. I don't believe in it, but if that's what they want, that's by their business. But when it comes to my daughter, God put me in charge of taking care of my daughter, and I will. I have no issues with gays. It's wrong in my book. I have a nephew that is. He asked me, Aunt Glenda, are you ever gonna judge me? I said, baby, that's not my job to judge you. That is God's job to judge you. My job is to love you unconditionally, and I do. And I tell him every day I love him. If people don't show them love, how are they gonna learn love? But at the same time, it's our job to protect our children. And I will protect them with everything that is in me. So if something happens, if you can't build bathrooms, my children will not be in the Lee County School System. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Barson. I appreciate everyone's time, and I'm very happy to see the passion that there is in Lee County. I think it's really important that parents are passionate about their children's education. I've been listening for a while, and there are things that are appalling to me. The fact that there are no doors on the stalls should be appalling to everybody in this room. I don't see a reason for why our students don't have stalls for privacy. The fact that things are happening on school buses should be appalling to everybody in this room. I worked for 13 years for the 11th largest school district in the United States. My job was working in the Palm Beach County School District Police Department. I read hundreds and thousands of reports every year. I read, we had 190,000 students in our schools. 190,000. The Palm Beach County, the size of Palm Beach County is the same as Rhode Island. So we're looking at a very large area with a very diverse population. And I will tell you that these things that happen here, my heart breaks. My heart breaks for you who just spoke about all of the rape that has taken place, but it's not unique to Lee County. Because those things happen, they happen in the bathrooms in Palm Beach County. They happen in the locker rooms, on the buses. We have, my police officers would arrest children constantly for bad behavior, for sexual behavior. But the children who were being arrested were not transgender. I'm gonna say that again. The children who were committing sexual assaults were never transgender. The children who were transgender in the schools were not out. They weren't telling everybody that they were transgender. They were not showing their genitalia to other children. The kids who are transgender are scared. They are scared because they know that this meeting is happening right now. And they know that they are the, they are being looked down upon. And they are being judged. They, you are making, there is an assumption being made that if you allow a transgender child to have the ability to go into a bathroom, that there will be sexual assault. The sexual assault is already happening, and it is not happening by the transgender children. It is happening by the straight children who need to be taught to respect one another. So... I have read the law. I know what you are facing. I think that it is, again, commendable that our families are so, feel so strongly for their children's education. But as we are coming out of COVID, and we're getting back into the regular school year, as we have so much that we need to review and make sure that our children are on track for graduation, making sure our children can read and write, and that they have a safe place to be when they are not at home with their families. I think that the least of our problems is if a transgender child would like to go into a single-stalled bathroom with a door so that they can have privacy, and we can abide by the law. Thank you.
My name is Shade Holesapple, and I just wanna share my thoughts about this policy and about, you know, the, how, you know, not just how I feel about this policy. I'll just, you know, start off. This morning, you know, I went to work, you know, all week, and I, you know, this morning, I really didn't feel like working. You know, I crawled underneath trailers, and I crawled up in the attic. You know, I'm exhausted, and I didn't feel like working. But I got up this morning, and I went to work because, you know, I needed to support my family, and I needed to make those people that live in those houses bills cheaper. But, see, I work 10-hour shifts, and today I was exhausted. I just didn't feel like coming to work, but I needed to. You know, there's teachers that, they get up in the morning, they don't feel like going, you know, teaching their classes, but they get up and, you know, they go teach them because the students need to learn. There are students that don't feel like getting up in the morning and going to class, but they go up there and, you know, and they go and learn. But they do it anyway. And so why should transgender get accommodated, go into the opposite gender bathrooms because of how they feel? You know, why is gender no longer segregated on overnight trips because of the feelings of a transgender? See, to my understanding, an accommodation was originally meant to better provide or suit a need of an individual. See, I'm deaf, and I was accommodated throughout school with an interpreter because I needed help to hear what the teacher was saying. I didn't choose to be deaf, I was born that way. They didn't change everything in the school just because I'm deaf. They didn't make everybody else learn sign language just because I was deaf. And it seems to me that, in these days, people misunderstand the purpose of an accommodation. An accommodation is not meant to support the feelings or the choices of an individual. You know, they're worried about how transgender feels, yet my daughter, who is a type 1 diabetic, was put in a room by herself to take the SOL test because they were worried about her glucose monitor going off and distracting all the other students, making them have to take the test all over again. But they didn't accommodate for her feelings because she wanted to take the test with everybody else. But they put her in a room by herself. They didn't care about how she felt, but they accommodated for everybody else. And she took the test, and she passed it regardless of how she felt. Now, I know some of you might be thinking, I'm up here talking about how I feel about this issue and how we're not to live by how we feel, then everybody should just, you know, just be good with it, even though they don't feel like it. But I'm just gonna tell you that I'm not up here because of how I'm feeling. I'm up here addressing this issue because it is wrong for an individual that is born a male to walk into a female bathroom and buy a toilet. It is wrong because it's creating an environment where individuals have the opportunity to sexually assault our kids. So what are you gonna do if that happens? Are you gonna accommodate for them feeling like raping our kids too? What about transgender teachers? Will they be allowed to go into our kids' bathrooms? If you wanna accommodate for transgender, then give transgender their own bathroom. Give them their own locker room. Give them their own school. Now, I've read the policy, and I've seen all the terminology introduced in the policy. And if my children are introduced to this terminology, they'll be confused. And I refuse to allow my children to be taught that it is okay to call a he, a her, and vice versa. You know, teachers aren't allowed to talk about Solomon Gomorrah, even though it's a part of history, and they're not allowed to talk about Jesus, so why are they allowed to talk about the very things that contradict our faith? And I do, the world is changing, a school is meant to introduce the world's principles into our children's minds. It's meant to be an unbiased environment so that students can learn just as well as anybody else. And that's all I have to say.
Hello, my name is Helen Levesey. I'm not used to speaking in public. We went to that meeting the other evening, and I was nervous, same way now. But we have a three-and-a-half-year-old daughter. And how are we supposed to explain to her when a man or a boy walks in the bathroom when she starts school? I don't wanna have to do that with her. And, I mean, we raised her in church, the Lord blessed us with her when she was only two months old. And I promised him then he would be, she would be raised in church, and I would teach her right from wrong. And I, Lord knows, I have done the best I can with her. And I will protect her with everything I got, because the Lord blessed us, me and my husband, with her. And I do not want her to have to come home and be confused and not knowing about a boy and a girl in the bathroom together. How are you gonna explain that to a three-year-old? And I don't want to. And like I told my husband, if we have to, I will teach her at home, but I don't want to. Because I do not believe in it. The Lord knows, I mean, He made man and woman. And that's the way it was, and that's the way it's always been. I'm sorry if I'm upsetting anybody, because Lord knows I do not wanna hurt nobody's feelings, but this is the way I believe, and I'm here to protect my daughter. And I will do it to the last breath I've got. And that's all I want to say.
My name is Mary Hobbs, and I have a grandson that's in the school, and I have some grandchildren that stick them to start school. And, you know, I'm not here to put nobody down or anything like that, that's not what I'm here for. And some of the things that I've heard said about, hey, there's nobody that hates anybody. You know, we're just standing up for our children and what we believe in. And I taught my children, when my children were growing up, that, you know, the Bible is the way. I mean, you know, God made us, He made us men, and He made us women.
That's right.
And He didn't change that. And God's word don't change. You know, not only do I worry about kids being, and I'm not saying that transgenders are gonna do anything to our kids, that's not what I'm saying, but it is confusing to our children. And they have no reason. I mean, if you're gonna do this, do something that's gonna be right for every child and not just for transgender. You know, if you're gonna do it, do something that's going to not affect just our children. Because if our children come home, and then we have to have an issue, and then we have to come before the school board, then it's gonna be a hate crime that our kids, because our kids don't understand it. And, you know, I've taught my kids the way I feel that's right. And, you know, I don't want somebody else confusing my children or my grandchildren and teaching them something that is different than what I've taught them. And I hope that you all will do the right thing. I hope that you will, and I pray that you will. And I thank you for your time.
Anybody else?
My name is Doug Altman. I am here as, I have a child, well, I've had one just graduate, but I have another child in the school system. I'm also a pastor in the community. I'm here, I think that we should love all people. That's what God has called us to do, is to love all people. But He also tells us to stand up for what is right. We want you to know that we love our school board, we appreciate you for everything that you do. But we're gonna stand up for what's right, whether you support it or you don't. And I think that we need to protect all kids, not some kids, but all kids. And I think that we need to take everything in consideration and show the love of God in everything. And so I just want you to know, I want everybody to know, that, you know, we oppose this. And so I just want you to know, I want everybody to know, that, you know, we oppose this decision that our governor wants to pass down and push down on us. And I want you to know that we stand for you as long as you do the right thing, but if you oppose it, we'll do everything that we can to let our voice be heard.
All right, we're gonna close the floor this time and move to board comments. So I guess I'll extend this first. We're all here together because of one thing. I don't know how everybody feels, but I think elections have consequences if this is important. That's not an easy thing to say sitting here on the school board. But when you put people in place, that makes the law, and try to enforce it right down to public school or on the highway or anything else, uh, we are duty bound supposedly to uphold it. And I don't know how else to say this, but I can't vote for this. I cannot support this model policy that the state-- I'm not just saying that because of the crowd or the applause. I said that five years ago when I ran. We're here. This is not an easy thing to tackle. Uh, my parents were here in the corner, and I was raised to respect women, and I do.
Let me say, I'm a big individual freedom speech person, so I'm really happy that so many people showed up tonight and expressed their opinion to a, to a functioning board that is obviously answerable to you all, the citizens, on all of your points. I do want to say, though, there was a comment made earlier which I disagree with. I didn't hear any ignorance or hate in your awesome comments. I heard concerns, parents. I heard concerned parents, concerned citizens that were worried about their children on both sides. So I, I didn't agree with that comment. Here's, here's the thing. Lee County Public School System already has a non-discrimination policy in effect. We don't need a mandate sent down from Richmond to enact something that they just want to push our will on. We are already gonna provide protection for every citizen, every student, every teacher. We're bound to do that, but we already have that policy in place. So I think everybody on both sides can take some comfort in that. I don't want to see anybody discriminated against, I don't want to see anybody harassed or bullied. I have an eleven-year-old daughter in Lee County Public Schools at Jonesville Middle School, and I have the same concerns that a lot of people have mentioned tonight about their daughters and granddaughters. So I know where you're coming from. It's not just me being on the school board, it's me being a dad. We can work through this, and we can all get along, but just be aware that everybody's gonna be protected, there's not gonna be any, any discrimination against either side, and that means we're not gonna take your children's individual rights away. That's my opinion. And I think that there's no need to adopt the model policies that are being, trying to be just force down our throats. I don't, I'm not for it.
Well, I'll just go along with what Rock said, I, I think he said it better than I could.
I'm in agreement also with Mr. Hobbs. I have two grandchildren in the school system, I'm a former educator, and I know all about protecting our children in Lee County School System. I am not for this model policy, I believe in the Lord Jesus Christ. And I'm not, I'm not against, we're gonna have to set a, set something up to protect both sides, our children and the transgenders. We'll set up a bathroom for whatever kind of, if we need to go, because we're supposed to love them, they're children too, and God expects us to give them the sun. So we're gonna protect, we're gonna protect our children, and we're gonna protect the transgenders that come into school systems and having them a designated place to use the restroom. We're gonna have teachers, we're gonna have teachers at bathroom duty, just like I used to do in Atosco. We're gonna have teachers at every bathroom when there's bathroom breaks, so they can supervise if there's any issues whatsoever. Do not fear, we're gonna take care of our children. Thank you.
Folks, I guess there's very little I can add to what everybody's already said here, but I'm, I'm, except for one else, I do not support this by no means of the word. I don't believe it's a God thing by no means, uh, they were working his way to people. And, you know, a lot of people say, well, we're afraid that transgender people are gonna do this or they're gonna do that. I, I don't, I'm not worried about those folks, just a lot of the other folks, you know. And I believe that we need to do what they said here, protect all, all, all kids, you know. It ain't just about the few over here or the few over there, it's the whole, whole Lee County School System that we need to protect. And whatever we gotta do, we just ask y'all to, to work with us, have faith in us that we will do the right thing to protect them the best that we possibly can. And if it's to build one, one bathroom for these folks and this over here, then that's, that's what we'll have to do. But give us, let, let us do our job. I'll say one last thing in, in closing, you know, before I come to this meeting, uh, I was sitting there in my kitchen and I bowed my head and I prayed to God, "Give me Godly wisdom, give me Godly strength." And, uh, and I, as I was leaving, I wrote these words on this, on this pad here, it said, "What would Jesus do?" And I believe that's what each and every one of us need to ask ourselves, "What would Jesus do in this instance?" You know, He ain't here to hate people. Jesus didn't come to hate, He came to love. And I believe that's what we need to do, show these folks our love, you know. We ain't gonna kind of put them over here and life, never be the life and stock or nothing like that. It's just all work together and love all, and let, let us do our job, do the best possible job that we can do to protect all our kids. And if we do that, then we're doing what God put us here to, put us here to do. Thank you all.
So as we move into the, the action part of this meeting, I'm sure these, some of these questions will come up if you all want to hang around, uh, that would be great. If you don't, we'll give you time to make an exit, but we will be discussing this policy. There is a lot of things in this state model policy that a lot of people probably don't know. By showing, if I'm gonna ask, how many people seen the model policies and ready? So there's very few. I, I want to ask questions. We have our school board attorney here, we have our superintendent, they help us interpret this mess. It's my duty as a board member from District One to ask questions and get to the bottom of it. So I hate to put you guys on the spot, but we're gonna, or I will. But if you all want to hang around, and if you don't, if you want to make some, make an exit, we'll give you a, a one or two minutes to do so at this time. To pass the consent agenda. We have a second, any discussion or questions about the consent agenda? All the papers say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion secured. Reports of the board, do you have any reports from the board?
I did go to Governor Lynn Woodholt's school, um, meeting, and their program is doing really well. I just wish there was more people from the county, uh, high schoolers that feel advanced and want to learn, uh, would take advantage of this program. But, uh, other counties do, and it's a way to get college credit. However, I do realize that we have other, uh, things that can be done where students, like some of them graduate with an associate degree before they graduate from high school this year. But it is a very good opportunity for those children that love to discover and, and learn, so that is Lynn Woodholt Governor's School.
Any other reports? If not, we'll move to reports from the Division Superintendent, Mr.--
Thank you, Mr. Kidwell. First, I'd like to start about the start of school year. We're working hard to get ready for August the 5th. We've not received a whole lot of guidance from the state or the State Department. There's not currently a mask mandate in place. I'm not speaking for the board, but I don't think the locality will have a mask mandate. We would only do that if the governor orders that. So we're going back to school as normal. We're not offering a remote option, so everything is in school, and summer school's put everybody behind a little bit, but we're getting ready. Custodians, everybody's getting the schools ready for the start of, start of school, so we hope it's as normal as possible back before the pandemic. Cooperative Living Youth Art Contest, we had two students, Madeline Saliers from Elton Knob and Madeline Wires from Rose Hill, that placed in this. While this didn't have anything to do with the school system, I think it's important to recognize our students when they do anything in the community that, uh, makes us proud of them, so I wanted to recognize them on that. Operations update, that's in your packet, shows you what the maintenance crew has been working on the last month, various things across the school. So have any questions on that, just let me know. Transportation update, well, they've been working hard to get the buses and the vehicles ready for the start of school since we got through summer school. We've had time to service those buses and vehicles and get those ready for school to start. Summer work hours, we've been working four-ten's. On July the 26th, we will go back to five days a week. So just wanted to make you aware of that, so July 26th, we'll go back to five days a week. Head Start Focus Area One Review Report. Ms. Baker, Tim Barnador, who is Policy Council Chairman, and myself met at the Head Start Office. We had a virtual review of that. They had one finding. Part of that was because our people did not go to one, uh, event, and the reason they didn't go to the event was partly because of COVID shutting everything down. But they are working to get that corrected, and that was the only finding they had, but I will say that they were very, um, complimentary of the changes and the progress that Head Start has made during that review. Just wanted to make you aware of that. Bus routes, um, we got several attachments there that was in your packet. These are approximate, uh, they are maps. One of them is the voting district, how the voting district is broken apart. One is how the high school bus routes would look, one is how the middle school bus routes would look, and one is how the elementary bus routes would look. Those are based on the decision that you all made at the last board meeting. Some of you came by the office, we've got the large maps in the office that are three by five or three by six. I just condensed those and tried to make them, um, easily read as possible by you. If you've got any questions on those, I'll try to answer. I don't know if I can remember every road that divides up what we currently have. Mr. Cave, Mr. Shelver from the school board office, Ms. Mooney, who helped at the school board office last year, helped us work on those, and we've got those in place and starting to work on routes, continuing to work on routes for next school year. If you've got any questions on those, I'd be happy to, I'd tend to answer those. Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Up next is unfinished business. Looks like we have no unfinished business, so we'll jump right into action and discussion. Items Action 52, this is a action to determine Jonesville Middle School's status as a feeder school to Lee High or feeder school to Lee High and Thomas Walker.
Mr. Chairman, I get your request, another board member's, we put that on there. Um, unless you change your decision about the bus route, the only recommendation that the administration can make is that Jonesville Middle is only a feeder high school for Lee High, because if you stopped the bus going from Jonesville Middle to Thomas Walker, you'd have essentially ended it being a feeder school.
Right, so as superintendent, I asked you, I know it's been on for several years, a lot of people ask me, is it a feeder school for both? I'm assuming it hasn't been for many years, but, uh, what do you recommend here? The plan was Jonesville area.
It has been a feeder school. I put a copy of the old minutes in your packet. It was voted on in April of 2013 to add that bus route from Jonesville Middle to Thomas Walker, and it has been a feeder school of both since that time. My understanding, except during the pandemic, they have allowed students to tour both schools, um, and the students and the families were given the option. So, but if you don't change your mind on the bus route, the only thing the administration recommends, it's only a feeder school for Lee High, because we can't have it as a feeder school in Thomas Walker without a bus route.
When did Lee High--
Started in 1989.
So we went, we went through consolidation and Jonesville High School becomes Jonesville Middle School, is that correct?
Correct.
And did Jonesville High School, Flatwoods High School, Keokke High School, Dryden High School, and Pennington High School, those communities all lose, all lose their individual high school and consolidated to Lee High School?
Correct.
And Thomas Walker was allowed to keep theirs, right?
Yes.
Okay, and more power to them, but I, I think it's worked out well for them. Jonesville is a part of Lee High. There, there's no other argument to be made there. Jonesville is my school, not because I'm a school board, because I'm a Jonesville Bulldog, I'm a Jonesville person. Jonesville is a Lee High school. I think that's the end of discussion for me, so.
Well, the only other thing I would like to add is when consolidation was taking place, uh, none of us wanted to lose our schools. And the recommendation was at first to have two main schools, and that wouldn't have been like it is now, but two large high schools, one on one end, one on the other. And, uh, then they came up with just one school. Okay, and that's Lee High. Because of politics and community, Thomas Walker got to keep theirs, and it's great. I love community. I hate that we had to close the little schools all around such as Sticklville, Keokke, you know, I, I didn't like that, and I want to see people have their communities. But in turn, by saying that, I want to say that Jonesville is not a feeder school for Thomas Walker and Lee High. So they wanted to keep their school in their district, and that's, I, I mean, I can't see it in a way, I didn't want to lose, lose Pennington High School, that's where I went, that's where Gary went, the other two went to Jonesville. We didn't want to lose their schools in our community, but it happened, so that's the way I stand.
I also am in agreement with the situation of losing our schools and by Thomas Walker, they got to keep theirs, but it was very hurtful to, as a graduate of Jonesville High School, and I was a teacher at the time when we had to consolidate. And it's just like, our community was just, it, it just separated us. It separated us, and it, and I know it did the other high schools as well. And it was sad, and it was hard, and it wasn't fair, and, and it should have been set up a different way. But, you know, being a graduate from Jonesville, being, uh, a, a former teacher there, it was a very hard situation, and I just wish that something else could have been different, but it's not. It is what it is now. I've accepted it. I became a teacher at Lee High School once we consolidated, I moved there to teach, and, you know, it, it's just something we had to accept, we had no choice. And it's just, you know, what's fair is fair.
And it's just, you know, what's fair is fair.
Like I said, I said that I want to do what's best for the kids. I know money's a big thing in everybody's mind. It always plays a part in everything. I understand that. But what's best for our kids is the most important. And we're talking about sports, you know, and a big school and a little school. Some folks feel better in the big school. Some folks feel better at a small school. I was just an average player. Probably if I went to Lehigh, I probably would never have got to play there. At Thomas Walker, I would probably have had a chance because it's fewest people. And that's the way I kind of look at this thing, you know. You feel, you know, that you don't like that big school atmosphere. And I understand about the numbers not being like they were at one time in Lehigh first. I understand about all that, you know. But again, it's about our kids. What's the best for our kids? And I just feel that if Jonesville, if we had Jonesville a feeder school before, then Jonesville would be a feeder school for Thomas Walker again. And if our kids want to go down there, then so be it. Let them go. That's where they feel best. They can learn best. They have opportunity to play sports. Sports is a big, big thing for a lot of kids. It really and truly is. That was one of my motivations for going, for trying to pass. If I got a seat, I was tickled to death. I really was, you know. Because I got to play and didn't get kicked off the team, you know. So sports is a great big thing for kids. And so I think for my part, just send them down there if they want to.
And I ride the bus, you guys.
So I'm not trying to dictate what happens. All of the county, obviously, I love Thomas Walker. I represent Thomas Walker. Try to do my best. There are several people in the building tonight that their kids come there. Some of those kids are in the building. I've got to know some of them. That's from the Jonesville area and a lot more from the Flatwoods area that I greatly, greatly appreciate a lot. Nothing wrong with that. Not trying to dictate the goals where. This conversation started as being a money-saving thing, and now it looks like we're talking high school and middle school. Years past, 32 years ago, as a matter of fact, Lehigh was built.
But the bus route was started in 13. And at this time, that was when kids from St. Charles could go to Elton Knob. We were just running buses everywhere. So this isn't just directed to have districts at Thomas Walker. It's directed for the whole county.
But how much money are we going to save? That's why I've asked that three or four times.
Approximately, if you took out the route, you would save the fuel mileage on that one route and one bus route.
Four years.
So when it stops, so approximately between 12,000 or 13,000 and 18,000 to 19,000, depending on where the bus driver was on the pay scale, fuel, depending on the cost, but I would say somewhere between 12,000 and 19,000 once the bus route is eliminated per year.
Like I said in the last meeting, I'm all for a reasonable line being drawn. I'm all for saving money. Obviously, we've tried to for many years here. The fair thing to do, in my opinion, still, would be to draw a line halfway between Jonesville Middle School and Thomas Walker and say, here's the line. If you live on this side, we'll bus you this way or we'll bus you this way. You know, obviously, parents will have an option to bring their kid to Thomas Walker or take them to Lehigh. There is some that goes from Rose Hill to Lehigh. But I'm all for being fair. And I want to be fair to not only the Jonesville community, but to the Thomas Walker community as well. And I'm willing to change it tonight and draw that line if everybody else is in thought. I'll ask for an action item, voting on this, and we'll move along. Action item A, we have a motion. The action, if any, to determine Jonesville Middle School's status as a feeder school to Lehigh or a feeder school to the Lehigh slash Thomas Walker. So we're going to have to separate these two and take a vote, right?
I think your motion would be whether you're making a feeder school for Lehigh or you're making a feeder school for Thomas Walker and Lehigh.
Right. So your motion, Mr. Williams, was?
Feeder school for Lehigh and Thomas Walker.
The motion been made. I'll second it. Any more discussion? This is a motion to allow Jonesville Middle School to be a feeder school for either high school. All the papers say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Motion failed. Two, three. Action item B, action if any, to approve fees for 2021, '22 school year, school policy, J and student fees, fines, and charges.
So.
Motion been made. Let's second.
Second.
Any discussion? All the papers say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Action, if any, to award a contract related to RFP 21-1,002 liquid propane to Lee Propane.
Can I ask a question now?
Yes, sir.
Do we get bids from anyone else?
Yes, we received three. We received one from Southwest Propane, Lee Propane, and Blossoming Gas. So there was three bids.
This was the low.
It was the low bid.
I submit.
Motion been made. We have a second.
Second.
Any more discussion? All the papers say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Action, if any, to award contract related RFP 21-1,002 supply of number one stokko, or stokko coal to G and D Process LLC.
Motion.
Motion been made. Let's second. All the papers say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Next is E, action if any, to award contract related to RFP 21-1,003 student-related services to Movement Forward Physical Therapy Incorporated.
I submit.
Motion been made. I'll second it. Any discussions there? All the papers say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is F, action if any, to award contract related RFP 21-1,004 copy paper to Tennessee Office Supply.
So.
Motion been made. Let's second.
Second.
All the papers say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. G, RFP roof replacement. You want to touch on that, because that's all I see on here.
Yes, we opened the bids for the roof replacement today. That was Lehigh, Ford Quillen, and what houses Autobody and the School Board Office. It, we just opened the bids today. It was two separate projects. Lehigh was a project by itself. The Autobody School Board Office and Ford Quillen was a separate. And I don't have those numbers in front of me. Pull my pocket. We had four bids from four separate vendors. Dixie Roofing was the low bid on one of those. And ABG Sealant and Waterproofing was the low bid on the other. And I think you have that in your packet.
So your recommendation would be?
The low bids on the two, two separate companies. We have not worked with either company. The architect and engineer has not worked with either company. But they are the low bids, summed by thousands of dollars. ABC Talking for the Lehigh, I mean, Lee Career Technical Center and School Board Office. So it would have been Dixie Roofing on the other one. The bid for Career Technical Center and the School Board Office was $673,412. The bid for Lehigh was $743,425. Those projects probably will not be, even if you approve it tonight and we notify them, due to a lack of supplies, those projects probably will not be done until the spring because all of the roofers that met in the pre-bid and all the roofers today said they cannot get their hands on any materials.
We have to go lock the prices if we get them out.
Yes, if we approve it tonight, we will hold them to those prices. That lets them go ahead and order those materials. And as soon as they get them, they will start. The only problem is if they don't have them by a certain point, they probably won't work on it much in the winter because you don't want to tear that roof off with snow and everything coming. They would probably wait till the spring. That is our recommendation, that we approve those two vendors for those two projects. That way they can order that material and get those projects started as quickly as possible. This money, this money will come through the stimulus COVID money. So we should get reimbursed for all of the costs of those. I know at one time, we thought it was going to be a million dollars for Lehigh. I will tell you, the architect and engineer who came with us today, he and Ms. Belcher and I, I asked him what they were getting right now. And he was kind of shocked at the prices we received. He said that, because they work all over the state and all over the region, he said he had saw some prices that was twice that high recently. So he thinks we've got a good price. And he thinks that we should approve those tonight. And Ms. Belcher and I, I think, both agree that we can get those projects started because they're less than I think what Mr. Hines said at one time. We thought Lehigh might be a million dollars itself.
They're the good companies.
From our understanding, while, like I said, we haven't worked with them, I looked on their website and maybe looked at some of their projects. And they have done school roofing before. We will try to have a clerk of the works, which is a person that we pay that stays with them pretty much daily to make sure that they're not cutting any corners or doing anything they shouldn't be doing. It does have to get inspected, so we wouldn't receive a warranty on it, 20-year warranty. So most of them are using the same materials. It's just, I guess, who can give us the best price by labor or how they come up with that.
And clerk of the works, it's a job that you have to, isn't that right?
We put that in the project because it's difficult for our maintenance crew to stay with the roofing crew because they can't do that. We usually find, we used Wayne Bonham once, someone who's familiar with that type of work. They come and check on it. They also run any change orders by them. It's someone we feel comfortable with that can kind of take that load off of the maintenance crew and keep an eye on the project.
So we have a motion for action item G, roof replacements.
So.
Motion been made. Let's second.
Second.
All the papers say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is A, action if any, to issue a request or proposal to replace the windows of all Indian County Public Schools. So we'll talk about this a little bit there.
We would like to send out a request for proposals just to see, because nobody in our maintenance crew and none of us have experience replacing windows. We can use stimulus money for that. What we would like to do is ask and send those out and get prices or bids on those to get an idea of what it would cost. We put in the one that Ms. Belcher and I have been working on, individual projects, so they would give us a price on each location of replacing the windows so we can look at it individually or as a whole. We just don't have any idea of what that's going to cost. That is one of our most inefficient parts of our buildings is the windows. I mean, some of the windows are 70, 80 years old. But we just don't know. And we would like to send out a request for proposals on those windows and see what we get back. We have the option of, you know, rejecting any and all bids. And we will put it individually so we can say, you know, we can afford to do this school, this school, this school. We may not be able to do this school. Ms. Belcher and I have been working on it. We do recommend that some of the newer schools, Lehigh probably does not need a window replacement. Ford Quillen does not need a window replacement. The new area at Rose Hill would not need a window replacement. The new area at Elton Knob would not need a window replacement. The new area at Dryden would not need a window replacement. Any outbuilding that's such as a modular or a double-wide, I wouldn't put that in on this bid. I'd just put the main brick and mortar buildings because our maintenance crew could change a window in a, one of the modular rooms a whole lot cheaper than we could get this done. So we're just looking at the main buildings and just asking for your permission to send that out and get prices on it. Motion.
Motion been made. Let's second. Any more discussion? All the papers say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is aye, action if any, to purchase H vac units for St. Charles Elementary and the Lee County School Board Office.
We have a boiler down at St. Charles that cannot be replaced.
It's coal-fired, right?
It is coal-fired. To replace it with any type of boiler, it's going to be over $200,000. We contacted a vendor, Air Mechanical Solutions. They are the sole source of barbed units in the state of Virginia. Those are the units you see mounted on the side of buildings that stick out about a foot, maybe a foot and a half. We can buy those, and we think, according to them, they came down and did some work for us. Get that for $91,000 for St. Charles. They would bolt, you would take out a window, bolt the unit up. There would be some additional costs. This is only for the materials. We would have to get some more electrical into the building because we don't have enough space in our electrical circuits now to do that. We're suspecting $20,000 to $30,000 at both locations on the electrical. We're hoping that price may go down because right now, everything's just astronomical if you can get it. The School Board Office is actually fed, and Autobody is actually fed by the one boiler that's down at the vocational school. Ford Quillen and the vocational school itself operate on a different system. They've got chillers and they use water. Whereas the old building where Autobody and the School Board Office uses steam. So we're recommending getting those units for the School Board Office. Autobody already has a separate heat pump unit in their classroom, which would be more economical than replacing that boiler just for the School Board Office. And it's at $94,263 plus the cost of the electric. And we're doing this under sole source because that's the only place that sells these units in the state of Virginia. So we're asking your permission to proceed. This, again, would be used stimulus money to cover the cost of this. It would be reimbursed. Definitely need to do one or the other at St. Charles, because right now, that one boiler will not heat that building when winter comes. Asking for it tonight because they told us it could be six to eight weeks before we get them. And it will take some time to install those. And we're trying to get them in before winter.
So what would the cost of replacement we call, just to give, it's a big crowd here. There's a big love. I know everybody don't pay attention to this stuff, but I think it's a good learning thing here.
We only had one vendor that bid on the boiler project. They said if they can get a coal-fired boiler, and they said that was a big if, because apparently there's only one manufacturer in the state and in the country right now that's making those, it would be approximately $260,000 to $280,000 for a coal-fired boiler. Propane's going to be around $200,000. And I'll be honest with you, we have to get this approved by the State Department. And I think everybody here knows that my family was in coal mines for years. I don't know that the State Department would approve a coal-fired boiler. I think that they would probably reject it. I think they would approve a propane boiler. I do not think they will approve a coal-fired boiler. And we're recommending this. I know the heating would go up, but if we get those windows replaced through the RFP, I think that would help some too. But like we only had one vendor that bid on coal for the system. It's just getting harder and harder to get coal. And he's not even sure that they can get that propane, I mean, the coal boiler, even if that's the way we want it to go. So they approved, you know, we've got the new boiler at Jonesville that they're installing. They approved, you know, we've got the new boiler at Jonesville that they're installing. That one was approved through stimulus money. So I think they definitely would approve a propane boiler anywhere else. Coal boiler, I just have my doubts.
Any more discussion here? If not, we have a motion on action item, we can work it out.
H, sorry. I still'm there.
Motion been made with a second.
Second.
All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, next is DJ, Review of Policies, Virginia Code 2241 and 23.3.
This is, I'm trying to find my copy of that. They've got it all up. This is the code of Virginia that deals with treatment of transgender students. And I can read the code or how do you want me to?
Touch on what we passed. I know, you know, the attorney said that the General Assembly passed a law. From what I've read and what I've seen, the State Department of Education said for every local school board to, they recommend that they adopt the model policy or a more comprehensive policy, is what I read. Like Rob said, we have a non-discriminatory policy in place that covers eight points.
Correct. When they passed the law, they ordered the Department of Education to do the model policy, which I think I sent to all of you.
Correct.
And then there were eight items underneath that, and I can go through those quickly. Compliance with applicable non-discrimination laws was number one. Number two was maintenance of a safe and supportive learning environment, free from discrimination and harassment for all students. Three is prevention of and response to bullying and harassment. Four is maintenance of student records. Five is identification of students. Six is protection of student privacy and the confidentiality of sensitive information. Seven is enforcement of sex-based risk codes. Eight is student participation in sex-based school activities and events and the use of facilities. Activities and events do not include athletics.
So touch on that, why does it come out and clear that?
Athletics, this falls under the Virginia High School League and they have their own set of guidelines and they did not put that in this policy. So you would follow Virginia High School League guidelines on sports.
Okay, I'm going to ask you some questions here. If we have a transgender student going to play sports on the opposite team or whatever, what's going to be done though? How do we handle that?
Virginia High School League, current regulations say that they have had to under the grant sex transformation surgery and are under hormone replacement there. If they don't meet those two guidelines, they cannot play the sport with their gender identity. With Mr. Sturgess' help, what we listed in the items on the screen is all of the applicable school board policies that meet these requirements. And you can see there's a number of them and it would have been pages upon pages if we had put the entire wording there. We recommend that you follow the Virginia School Board Association policies that meet these guidelines. Administration is not recommending the model policies that they sent down because we feel like we have met it with the policies that we have in place that you all passed last month. And many of them have multiple policies that can apply to those positions.
It's a review.
It's just a review. It's not an action item, but it's to review the policies that we passed at the last meeting. With that being said, and I'm not going to get into hypotheticals or legal advice in open session, but 22.1, 23.3, the Virginia Code, and it's highlighted there at the bottom of the screen. It says, "Each school board shall adopt policies that are consistent with but may be more comprehensive than the model policies."
Maybe it is.
Right. And so it's not stating that you have to adopt the model policy, but you have to adopt policies that are consistent.
You mean?
Correct. And so what we've done with this is to present to you all, to show the eight different areas that was addressed in the model policy and what policies that we put in place. Again, it's not just one policy, it's policies that we put in place that was recommended by the VSBA in order to be in compliance.
I'll ask you something, we're just going to review it. We ain't setting there.
This is a review of the policies that was put in place last month by you all that was recommended by the Virginia School Board Association. There's not an agenda item that tonight in order to adopt a model policy or to undo the VSBA policies that we've gone with.
So we basically already have a policy?
We've got, what we have is under, again, we had to meet the criteria that's set forth in that code section that says that it has to be consistent with the policies that, of the model policies developed by the Virginia Department of Education. And what we have in front of you is VSBA policies dealing with non-discrimination and on the eight different areas that that model policy touches.
Any other questions or comments about this policy? Obviously, none of us want to discriminate against anyone, students or adults. I have to ask, it's going to be a tough question, but how do you handle adults coming in public buildings? If the scenario happens, how do we handle it? Or what happens?
If they come in a public building and do what?
If we have a male going in a female bathroom publicly at a ballgame, what happens?
Right.
Under this policy that we passed?
And what I would tell you is that as far as dealing with hypotheticals, I'm not going to get into that specifically tonight. I mean, we'd have to deal with it on a position-by-position basis.
Right, but if it happens, obviously it's going to be dealt with right then. What would happen right then? If a male or what looked to be a male went in a female bathroom during a ballgame or a school event? Because that's on a lot of people's minds, obviously it's on mine.
If they were truly transgender, if they'd gone through surgery and hormone therapy, I don't know, the law would probably uphold them being in there because they wouldn't be after women.
And like I said before, Mike, I'm not going to get into legal advice as far as what I'm going to tell the administration to do as far as that in particular. Because law's the law as far as that goes. But what we're talking about tonight's the policies that have to be adopted, which we've got the Virginia School Board policies in place.
Mike, do we have, do we have policy in place now?
We do. We have non-discrimination policies in place. It's a blanket policy. We're not going to discriminate against age, religion, all kinds of things. That's what we have in place now and like you said, we passed that and we've got that in place.
The guys going, girls going, or that's what we're talking about?
That's a question for the administration.
We're going to have to see what kind of situations we have to face.
Exactly.
Determine, you know, how to follow policy and work around those things, make accommodations for people and not impose on other people.
I don't think you can just say blanket, this is what it is. You've got to take the facts of the individual situation and then see how it applies to both local policy, state law, and federal law.
But yeah, as far as actual policy, it is, it's in place, non-discrimination policy. And obviously, this is a tough situation, tough topic to talk about. If you feel good about it, I'm good.
I think we're complying.
What we've got, is what I'm saying.
We're complying with the law, with the policies that you all adopted last month that we have listed up on the screen and in front of you. And like Mr. Sturgess said, it's a combination of policies. There's no one, we didn't pass one standalone transgender policy. You have a number of policies that meet the requirement of the law. And I'll ask Mr. Sturgess if he agrees with that.
I do. Again, under 22.1, 23.3, it says policies. It doesn't say a policy to address it. It doesn't say that you have to adopt the model policy word for word. It says policies that are consistent with the model policies developed by the Virginia Department of Education. And we, I believe that those...
That's what I'm asking. I don't want to be consistent with that model policy, just to be honest with you. Not in that deal.
But that's what the state law says, that it's got to be consistent. And with the non-discrimination policies that we've got in place, again, we could go, you know, one by one to show what they are, but they are consistent with what's in place.
But if we're consistent, we're going to say the girls can go and the boys?
Again, it depends on factual situations that we'll have to determine what the facts of each case is and look at the law on it and go from there.
We're going to review it, that's how we're going to do it, right?
Well, we about ready, we passed it.
I understand.
Actually, the odds of encountering a transgender here in Lee County would be very, very low. About four tenths of a percent of the population. I think about 400 in Virginia, so.
I'll say no.
But the hype, you know, sometimes makes kind of blows things up. I don't think we'll see it here, probably. And if we do, we've got policy in place.
It's too late, I could have done that. I've got three grandkids, three grandchildren.
So this thing is going into depth about putting, and I hate to talk about this publicly, about putting menstrual need suspensions, suspensions in boys bathrooms. Or what? What are we going to do to accommodate the state and what they're saying on this model policy? In our policy, is what I'm asking.
If they're truly transgender, you wouldn't need that, which is medically speaking, you don't just have to pay.
The state's requesting that we put these suspensions in the boys bathroom. I'll say no.
I didn't read that.
It's on page 15.
The state has specific language in their model policies. Administration does not recommend you adopt the state's model policies word for word. We recommend that you follow the Virginia School Board Association policies that meet the requirement of the law, not the wording of the model policies that they sent down.
Right. I just think it's fair to let the people know what the policy entails and what the Department of Education is putting to us to have it done or accomplish that starting this school year.
And a lot of it, and I think Mr. Sturgess, I think they put a lot of examples in there. That does not mean we do that word for word. We have met the, in our opinion, we have met the requirement of their 22.1-23.3 without adopting their model policy. And like Mr. Sturgess said, if anything came up, we would do like we do at any school with any situation. We look at it on a, you know, case-by-case basis. What does the policy say? What does local law say? What does state law say? What does federal law say?
I'm sure you would deal with it immediately.
Absolutely. I mean, it doesn't matter what it is. I mean, I'm a former principal and we have several former principals sitting here. I mean, as soon as we know something, you deal with it. The worst thing you can do is just let anything go.
As I said, we passed that policy last month. This is just a review of it along with the state's model policy. I don't have anything else to say about myself. It's pretty clear that we have not adopted the model policy.
Correct. We adopted Virginia School Board Association policies that meet that requirement.
Any other questions? If not, we move to action item K. Action Affinities to Deed the Head Start Building at Institute Street, Jonesville, Virginia, back to the county, which will be the...
That's the old Head Start House. With Mr. Sturgess' help, we would like to deed that back to the county. My understanding, the county is getting ready to demolish the old school board office and we have no plans for that building. The reason we left that building is because it's beyond repair. And if we did it now, I think they could incorporate demolishing that building at the same time they demolish the other building and I think it's just helpful for everybody. The white building up there would stay as a Head Start building currently because that was bought with Head Start funds and there is an extensive load of paperwork to go through to ever do anything with that. We may start that process, but at this time, we're not ready to do anything with that building. They have some stuff stored in it. But we are recommending that with Mr. Sturgess' help, we work with giving that back to the county so they can take care of it in whatever fashion they see.
Right. And they take over the maintenance of enough people?
Well...
It's theirs.
If they want to do that.
For demolition, it's theirs.
The reason we left it because it was beyond maintenance.
Right. So we have a motion on action item K.
So do.
Motion been made with a second. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Hines, a reading, this is a closed session.
Move to go into closed session, discuss personnel under Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3711, subsection 81. Student admission under Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3711, subsection 82. Discuss pending threat litigation under Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3711, subsection 87. Discuss contract negotiation under Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3711, subsection 829. Confidential proprietary information under Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3711, subsection
Motion been made with a second.
Second.
Second, before we go into closed session.